Flanders is the closest firehouse. I don't want to have the responsibility of looking back someday and saying, this study said get rid of one pumper truck. And I didn't, I was hoping that maybe it'd be two where we could put a Band-Aid approach. And I figured that it takes so long to build a truck, to put it into the specifications to do it, that I think I'm going to support it based on those public safety concerns. Because if that study comes back and says boo hoo, you people need to share your equipment, get into mutual aid, do all this, we're going to do that regardless. But in the meanwhile, I can sleep better at night if there's a horrific accident, and I know that there's going to be, and I know that we're in this situation now, that if there was an accident, we have what we have. But I think it's penny pound foolish, I can go ahead with the one truck, let the voters decide if they want to put, decide ultimately decide. But I think even with that study coming back, I look at it as more as an organizational, I look at it as how we configure the two fire departments, not trade as two separate lands, it is one town. And I think we're really looking at the total equipment and what do we really need? And I think even if we, if there's a reduction, it's not going to reduce two pumper, it's not going to be on, it's not going to eliminate two pumper trucks down at Flanders. It might eliminate one, or it might not eliminate none. But I feel confident. So I think we should go ahead.
See, my opinion is more about the, the way I'm looking at this, I think you've got two trucks that are past their end of life, and you're right now got a whole bunch of Band-Aids, you're putting on them to survive. And it sounds like Niantic's got one that's getting close to that same point. So if we got three fire trucks that are close at their end of life, or past their end of life, it's unlikely that we're not going to buy a new one. But my question comes, is this survey in 90 days going to tell us that we should buy a thousand gallon, fifteen thousand gallon, whatever the number is? And the capacity, but the equipment that we buy, is the survey going to guide us to a different type of equipment? A different size, a different utility, something that has a combination of, of equipment in it, or something else? We're going to buy a water truck and drive it to the, I don't know.
Say, I mean, say the study came back and said, you know, we need to buy a tanker. You're going to have to build an addition on a firehouse because we don't have the room for it.
I'm just, I'm just saying that because we're so close to having our survey results tell us, maybe they'll tell us, you know what, you guys are going down the right track. Maybe they're going to tell us, you forgot this, or that, or the other thing.
Give me the dates again. The date when it's completed is what?
Ninety days.
No, no, not the study, I'm talking about the demo.
The demo, Dave said it would be delivered in September.
Be delivered in September. And they're willing to hold their price until when?
Uh, I believe first of the year the prices go up.
No, but they're, the deal they have with you right now, you have to notify them when on the four hundred and sixty thousand.
I was going to let them know tonight whether it got pushed forward to the town meeting or not, and then...
Oh, it has to go to a town meeting.
Yeah.
Well, it's going to go through you first.
Yeah, I know. If it gets to here, it still has to go to a town meeting.
I don't, they never gave me a rock hard date.
This isn't the last...
That'd be nice to find out. Given what we're talking about, I mean, obviously it'll come to a vote, it'd be nice to call New England Fire, whatever it is, and say, how long are you willing to hold this? Do they understand we're having a study done, or no?
Yeah.
Were they sympathetic to that?
Uh, no, they, most of the guys that work for New England, some of them are from here, or live in the neighboring towns, so they know what our response area is like, and again, they, you know, obviously they're selling us a rig, but they know what we need in town, because they're all firemen outside of their regular jobs as well.
I know this truck can be repaired, and we could, we could Band-Aid it. It might end up being the same cost as, you know, the truck, the car payment that would be for a new vehicle. I, I decided, well, I didn't decide, but I approved Bill running forward with this, going to the board of selectmen, and now to you. When I learned that the truck failed at a fire, with fire, firemen inside a burning building, and the truck wasn't pumping water. And they had it back out of a building without water.
And what happened to that house?
It, it was Furman's house, next to Dunkin' Donuts, you know? It eventually got put out because there was all the trucks that were there, we had a lot of mutual aid come, but the guys were in with the hoses hooked up to this truck in question, and it failed.
Aren't there hydrants right there?
Yeah, but it wasn't...
That wasn't a hydrant issue, that was a pump issue.
Pump, they pump the water from the hydrant.
Yeah.
You know, they're still pumping. Um, so, I don't know, I'm not a fire guy.
So, what do you say? That, that was a mechanical issue.
They're professionals in what they do.
A few years ago, recently.
That was the story I got, is we have, we do have a responsibility for the safety and care of the people.
Of course, that doesn't even need to be said.
And our, of course, it doesn't, but our equipment is failing, and these guys are out there. We have two older trucks that are over the line, I'm not recommending buying two, I'm recommending buying one. We'll figure out the second one after the study.
And there's one, and there's one soon to come up in Niantic?
Five, six years from now.
All right.
My guess, I, I don't have the capital...
Let me just understand one thing. We have three engines in Niantic?
That, yep, that carries seven hundred and fifty thou, uh, seven hundred and fifty gallons of water.
A piece.
A piece.
And two in Flanders?
One that carries a thousand, and one that carries fifteen hundred that's out of service. And our goal was to get two twelve fifties, so we don't lose our water capacity, because you can't get a fifteen hundred gallon anymore on a single axle.
Do you usually use the whole load on a fire?
Oh, absolutely.
Two hundred and fifty gallons an hour.
Now, do they come in increments of two fifty, thousand, twelve fifty, fifteen hundred?
Well, the pumps themselves are fifteen hundred gallon per unit pumps, that's what NFPA standard is usually going for right now.
No, but not the pump, I'm talking about the capacity of the tank.
The capacity of the reservoir.
You can get them from two fifty and up. It all depends on your, your needs.
How often does Niantic use their pumping, their water on their truck?
Every time they have a fire.
So they don't plug into a hydrant?
No, I'm sure they do, but that, like I said, if you're following inch and three-quarter line, at the proper pressure, that's two hundred and fifty gallons a minute. So seven hundred and fifty gallons goes quick, no different than a thousand gallons, goes by like that.
All right, so you're way ahead of me here.
Sorry.
Do you take water out of a hydrant, do you still have to pump it?
Yes, we still have to, even though we're taking the water.
You pump it, but, but you're not carrying, all right, I'm not asking my question clearly.
Well, no, you're talking about capacity of a storage tank on there.
Yes.
And I, I don't think that's, that's not the big deal.
No, no, it's not, you use the...
Because they burn through that, so you need...
But if, if you have hydrants available, do you use the hydrant as a source first, or the water in the truck first?
It all depends on the fire. Life safety is first. If I'm, got to get water on the fire, I'm going to get water on the fire, and then somebody else is going to grab the line for me and start hooking up the hydrant. I have a thousand or fifteen hundred gallons of water, I know I have five minutes maybe to do what I have to do before I run out.
All right, I got you. All right, so you're recommending one truck for now? You think at a minimum, no matter what comes out of this study, you believe that we're going to be...
I think this town's going to be buying a truck, and whether it's this year or next year, they're going to be buying a truck for Flanders.
But you're not sure...
So the purpose, the purpose of moving it forward is because of the failure on, it's really moving it forward because of the failure?
It's failing, and we, it has failed. I'll tell you that we didn't have any pumpers at Flanders for a short period of time. Forty-eight hours, but we fixed the second truck, because that went down too. These trucks are failing, we need to have one reliable pumper for these guys and ladies.
I agree.
And I think we're, both trucks unfortunately are coming up to the lifespan at the same time. That's, that's unfortunate.
That's what I'm looking at, is from what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing, you replace a truck now, the other one in two years, and then the other one two years after that.
No, maybe not. Maybe, maybe not.
Well, you know...
Well, you're saying nine or once.
That's the point.
Stagger it, so it's not such an order.
You replace one, you keep fixing the other one, but at least you have one reliable pumper.
Flanders needs two, one now and one maybe in three years, you're looking at one year...
Mr. Chairman.
Now, we may have that study that comes out that says, because of the hydrants in Niantic, they don't need three pumpers, they need two, and Niantic, in fact, I mean, Flanders in fact may need two, right? Because they have less hydrants, they have a...
Yep, and I, I've spoken to most officers down there, and most of them are aware that they may, if that, if that were the way the study came back.
They may what?
They, they may have to lose one because of, because of the hydrants. But they also understand that we also need the water. I did get a answer back on that price, the second it comes off the line, any dealer across the country is open to purchase that apparatus.
Now, it's the study's got the... Having the pumper trucks, order now, even the accidents are always on R ninety five.
Well, I don't want to oversell it either, I, these guys are busy, these guys are busy all the time. I don't want to oversell it, we know how busy, we know the state of our highway system in this area, of course they need a reliable vehicle.
My, my, my thinking is if the study comes back and says cut back equipment, then that's how we report, we don't expect that it's pumping in terms of looking at other as well. But I should also say, we need to buy one more of them anyway.
Agree.
So...
There's three conversations going on in this quarter.
Can you feel the excitement, though? It's big.
Just to see them.
Yeah.
Playing well.
So, I'm just, I, I can understand your, your recommendation, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, I can understand one truck, but what I'm a little, what I'm hesitant about is, if this study gets completed, and let's say there's a recommendation to consolidate the fire departments, let's just say, because we're looking to minimize overhead, we have no idea what's going to come out of this. I'm a little, I'm just concerned that the equipment that would be recommended out of that study will not be consistent with the specs we're asking for here, because the whole group may be, may be reorganized differently.
That's what I meant.
What's that?
That's what I meant.
I feel like the school's going to get so...
Consolidating, consolidating the two departments isn't going to change how we operate and serve the town, as far as fire service goes.
Yeah.
Could you hit the button on that TV thing?
What?
It's getting me off the TV.
Oh. Is there something you want to do? Go ahead.
The meat of the conversation's there. I, I think these fellows know, and they're the professionals, we don't need a study, they know, they know that they're operating, Flanders is, the north part of town, where seventy percent of the land doesn't have hydrants.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they're pumping from ponds and lakes, some hydrants, lots of long hose like what happened on Cardinal Road, where there's a hydrant down at the end of the street, and half a mile between there and the, and the house, and they made it work. They know what they need. They know that when the study comes out, they're still going to need one of these. Even if we consolidate departments, there's going to be some things that's going to be needed down here, that are going to be different than what's needed up there.
What's the added cost of the dual axle?
The worst that's going to happen? The added cost of the dual axle, if you went to twelve hundred, or fifteen hundred gallons?
Uh, we didn't even look at that, because we're trying to keep, keep what we have, and operate safely, and not have to spend all that extra money. We believe we can still operate in a safe manner, going down to twelve fifty, and possibly get a twelve fifty next year, and not having to go to a dual axle. You're, you're adding a lot more weight to the, to the rig. And, and if you go to a tanker as well, you're losing hose capacity and compartment space. Now, the entire rig is just water, you're not carrying any more equipment, you're actually losing spots for equipment, you're not carrying as much hose, which, and the hose, I mean, it all goes hand in hand, exactly Cardinal Road. We put out over three thousand feet of five inch hose to make our own water main, just to get to that house. If you took engine two away, made it a tanker, now there's no hose on it, you just lost sixteen hundred feet of water main.
Mm-hmm.
So, let me go back to Niantic's again, even though we're talking about a Flanders apparatus. There's three seven hundred and fifty gallon capacity...
I believe all three of them are seven fifty.
All carrying the same amount of hose and everything?
I'm not sure if their hose loads.
And two of them are relatively new, and you say one has to be replaced in five years.
I'm looking at the CIP, there's nothing listed of anything coming up in the next five years.
All right.
On CIP.
Yeah, because I'm trying to imagine why they'd need three. I know it's a different firehouse, we're not talking about it now, but I'm just, in my mind, I'm thinking, you know, is there a way we could, first, I, I know I already said this, we want to support you, we're trying to find creative ways to minimize this financial burden. I don't know if it would involve trading in a seven hundred and fifty gallon capacity truck for one that's, you know, consolidating two of them for one, I, I don't know how the shell game could work, but...
Well, we've, I, I'm kind of inclined, listening to everything, I'm more inclined to commit to one at this price, if they've done all their due diligence, which I think after their last run in front of us, they, they were much more diligent this time. You didn't really give the money back to us, you had a million and three in the last truck, and we put your...
I don't think we actually took it.
We put your feet, we put your feet to the fire, but it was a nice gesture to give us back. Sounds good in a presentation. Now, I don't see how we're ever going to get out of this trap of having one pumper that we're going to need. Let's say the study comes back and says, Niantic only needs two pumpers, right? They have a third one, we go allocate that here, it's not on the CIP, but we know one thing, we have two pumpers here that are shot, right? And, you know, at what point do they say, do we put good money after bad, when we know? I mean, it would still be nice to know that it's going to come off the line in September, you know, we all have our feet to the fire, so to speak, but do we, you know, it would be nice to know if they, you know, where's our competition, or when's our drop dead date? You know, nobody likes to respond with a gun to their head, but I still think in the interest of public safety, and just what we're looking at here, whether we consolidate the firehouses or not, they're going to have different equipment in different locations, and we have different needs. So I guess my question really would be, if the study comes back and you guys live with a twelve hundred and fifty new pumper truck, and potentially a seven hundred and fifty gallon one that gets reassigned from Niantic to the Flanders?
If that was the case, we're going to have to make it work. I mean, at that point...
Good answer. You know, that's just how I read it, because I was coming into this meeting saying, wait for the study.
Right.
Right? I think a lot of us were like, we're paying for this study, and, you know, we're going to jump it by ninety days, but, you know, the last time we kind of put everybody's feet to the fire, so to speak, right, with the ladder truck, we saved a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars by the time we would have looked at a price increase and all the other stuff. Yeah, so, I'm kind of inclined to take a hard look at committing to one unless I'm missing something there.
Well, I think after listening to everybody, I'm coming around a little bit too. I see the wisdom in the study coming back, if they say Niantic only needs two, then that would be your second replacement. There's no getting around needing one in the next year or two. Because this failed outright, I suppose that's why you're moving it up into this budget cycle.
Yeah, it, it really came to light after the, the Flanders Road fire.
Which was well after the budget was already signed, sealed, and delivered. This happened after.
It was May ten...
Yeah. So I, I'm starting to get that, I understand it. I'm just concerned about the financing, you know? We've got six hundred and fifty thousand being returned to the town. Why do we have to bond it? Why can't we take that money and pay for it, and save on finance costs? Cash discount.
I want to know if they last twenty years, how can we buy these things two years apart? I know it predates everybody, but it just seems, you know, when you're trying to manage cash flow and outlay, you know, we get loaded up.
I, I just want to, I just want to remind the board that we, we increased the amount of applied fund balance for this year's budget, based upon what our expected return is at the end of the year.
Oh, I remember.
And perhaps, you should read through the Moody's rating report, and look at their comments relative to...
That's our danger, so I'm right there.
I didn't look at the detail.
No, they talked about...
I didn't look at the detail, but I see that we, we received the same rating.
Well, they talked about challenges, so...
And I understand that you need to bump up that fund balance from eight percent to ten or twelve, and maybe we get a better rating. But in my mind, it comes down to choices. What does the town want to pay for? If there's an emergency that comes up and we need to fund something that's unexpected, we need to look to other places where we, we can take away from. So it's, so you've got my attention. I agree with the public safety issue that Beth and Steve brought up, and again, it just comes down to financing, how do we want to handle this?
How much does money cost us right now? But I philosophically look at that fund balance as for a real emergency, this is a capital expense. It is a public safety concern, but it properly belongs in a bonding calendar. I almost look at the fund balance, as when there's a fiscal crisis, what you counted on, say, a state grant suddenly dropped down, or something like that, is to catch the current fiscal year budget, that's what it's there for, it's that safety net.
But we're not taking away from that, Beth, but we're not taking away from that. The six hundred and fifty is going to be added to it. We're, we're not, we're not taking away from the...
Whether it's good years or bad years, you always should have a, an amount, the same amount that's going into that, that fund balance. When we start playing with it and saying, you know, well, we don't need it this year, or we don't anticipate that, or we have enough, it's best to be cautious, that's, you know...
What percent are we at? Can we add that in?
Like a seven point three or...
Eight, two after that.
There's always the thought that the next twenty years of citizens will be taking advantage of this fire truck for the next twenty years, and so those citizens should pay for it over the twenty years. If a truck, it's, truck's, truck's lifespan is twenty years, and so is the bonding. So, you know, should we, should today's citizens be paying for the truck that will be protecting them ten, fifteen, twenty years from now? Or should those people pay for it? And that's part of the...
Well, I hope those people are still here twenty years from now.
God bless them all, but, but you know what I'm saying. You're spreading it out, it's also, of course, bonding is, money's cheap right now, too.
That's what I mean.
It's not six percent, it's not eight percent, it's still one or two.
Six, is that what it would be?
No, I mean, the...
Who do we do, two and three quarter on this bond?
The issue that we, we just did, the net, the net interest cost was one point seven four percent.
That's good.
On this bond?
On what we just did, yes.
Really?
What, what was that rating on, Anna?
One point seven four.
Over a whatever period of time?
And, and then in addition to that, the acquisition deal that we just did, we just approved, that was one point five nine percent.
We can bond.
That's, that's a large, that's a large amount for us to, to take from, to take the fund balance.
Yeah.
That would not be a favorable...
I mean, I think we're looking at public safety, nobody likes to spend five hundred, even though we had seven fifty, that I'm sure is a number, you know, it's not like anybody wants to do this. At some point in time, this is why we have a community, right? I mean, I just can't see any study coming back, whether we merge or not, that they're going to, say, get rid of, only end up with three pumper trucks in the whole town. Is that, so I would think feasible? Yeah.
What, I would think if the rating agency says that our fund balance should be higher, we should kind of understand that they're, they're experts in that, right? So to say that we want to decrease the fund balance because we think today's the rainy day, instead of there's going to be a rainier day in the future, I think the weather's going to get worse instead of better.
Well, you know, if you just read the front, the credit challenges, use of fund balance, appropriations to balance budgets, factors that could lead to a downgrade, multi-year decline in reserves, I mean, they, to Bill's point, they do it every day.
Bill, I just had a question. I know you had mentioned in here the CNS specialty, the demo, it's, you know, a hundred thousand dollars cheaper, it's got a hundred thousand dollars less of a product, or, I, you know, I don't know the business, but do you have the spec sheet? Like, I see the five star spec sheet, I see the New England Fire spec sheet, is the C, did you include the CNS demo inspection?
I just put the basics, the pluses and the negatives between the two of them. I sent our exact specs to all of those dealers, and that's, these are what they came back with. I mean, the CNS, like I said, if I could have sold two engines for a six hundred and change, I would try to do that, but it's missing booster reel, it's missing the front intake, and one of them doesn't have a front discharge, it's, it's everyday stuff that we, we use, it's not bells and whistles that I'm looking for.
Right. And, and, you know, I, I agree, I mean, public safety, you need to have a, a new fire truck, and I don't think it's going to go to waste because of the, the study that comes out, but what does it cost to get a, a new pump for a fire truck? Can you even get a new pump for this nineteen ninety-three Spartan? And I'm just curious.
You can get a new pump.
Right.
I don't know what the cost would be, but the life of the apparatus is still the original age.
Right, right, I understand. I was just curious if you knew what a price of a pump was.
Well, you're looking at eight thousand dollars just for repairs.
Right, and sometimes the repairs cost more than a new pump.
Yeah.
So that's, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement, I certainly want you guys to have the best equipment to do what you got to do, that's a given. And, you know, after listening to everybody too, I would, I would agree that no matter what comes out of the study, if you have two trucks that are down, probably going to at least need one new one, hopefully not two, but at least one. It, it might be different specs than what would be recommended, but I'm not sure that it would be that different, given that these are sort of general specs, we're talking about area without hydrants, that kind of thing. So, I don't know if there's any way we can improve the price, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that you guys have done the best you can.
I did, I, I didn't have any comparable prices when I first went to the Board of Selectmen, and then the second time I came back around, I said I reached out to nine other apparatus dealers, and only three of them got back to me. And the one five star came back at over five hundred thousand, it's bigger than what we're looking for, so it's going to probably not fit in the firehouse lengthwise for what we already have.
What did the other ones do, just not reached, did any, did you follow up with them, or call them, or do anything?
Oh, one of them reached out to see how we made out, I said we still had a finance meeting, and, but I again told him that, that was the CNS, that your two demos are missing stuff that...
No, but I mean, I mean the people that didn't even bid.
The ones that didn't bid, did you give them a tickle?
Did you have the wrong email address?
No, no, I went, I went right to there.
Well, you know what I mean. How, how long have you been looking for? How long have you been looking for?
Comparable?
Yeah.
About a month.
Uh-huh.
So, to piggyback a little off Jason, the, the two demos from CNS, three hundred and five, and then three, you know, there's a fifty thousand dollar difference between those, so I mean, you know, all the other stuff, I kind of agree with the public safety, those are big spreads, so I'm just wondering...
It's, it's simply they're missing all that extra equipment that goes into, so the, the front intake, that's engineering cost to run the pump water.
Yeah, no, I get it, so the cost of that, I mean, that's not anything you're going to do aftermarket anyway, right?
Yeah, that, I, I could be astronomical to do that after, to Bill.
Was that where you were going, Jason?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, I mean, I'm not trying to understand what the fire truck does, but the front intake is, that's what pulls out of the leak to fill the, the valve up, I mean, so what do they do to fill the valve up?
Yeah, so to give you the background, you can, we pull from the front, because it's safer for us, and it's safer for the apparatus. You can pull from the side. We tried, when we first, engine one, the one that's currently in service right now, when we first received that, and we went draft testing with it at Pataganta Lake, we did a lot of drafting from the side, and with only two lengths of hard suction, you have to get so close to the water to get that below the, the water line, to get the good draft and not suck in any air. But by doing that, the ground softens from the water, the heat from the motor, two weeks old, we almost put that thing in the drink, because...
That would be disappointing.
We didn't know any, we didn't know any better at the time. So, now it's standard that we go off the front, we get three lengths. Engine Two currently has three lengths, Engine One only came with two. We don't have room anywhere to put another one on there. So, we're trying to stay within our, how we operate now.
Right. So, all the pumpers, and I know you don't speak for Niantic, but I'm sure you have an idea of what their equipment is, are all front-load pumper, I mean, all are front, I guess, intake? Front-load intakes?
I believe they all have front intakes, but I'm not, I'm really not positive on that.
Yeah, I just don't know enough about it. I have to go home and research it and study it.
That's why we, that's why we're paying somebody to do that.
Yeah, that's why we're paying the study, because I can't, yeah, right.
Because we have day jobs.
Right. And no, I wouldn't like to see a fire truck at Patyanser.
Right, no, I get it.
But this is their day job.
Well, I do appreciate Bill Weber's comment as well, that if it's a public safety issue, it does have to go back to the people, let's let the people decide.
It's kind of, that's kind of the full circle I came around through, is I was thinking that we might want to go to a bigger truck, and what you're saying about the things that you lose because you got the bigger tank, you can't put the people on and all that other stuff.
It's definitely a benefit to have more water, but you're losing...
So, okay, I got, I got that now because of your expertise, it's unlikely that this recommendation's going to come in saying you should buy six thousand gallon trucks or something else. So, based on the experts for the financing, based on the experts for the fire department, I think that that's, I think we have to get at least one truck, and I think that's probably the right thing to do.
One more question, Bill. Just to be clear, if we go ahead with purchasing this one truck, that doesn't lock us into buying the second truck down the road.
No, it does not.
We're not getting this price based on the promise of a second purchase.
No, we're not.
It's a standalone deal.
It's a standalone, standalone, one truck. They were only saying that if we committed to purchasing another one a year later, that they would offer us the same price.
This year's price.
Okay, but if we, but if we don't?
We don't, we still keep this price.
Okay.
We have to return the truck, no.
Anna, did you want to say something?
The resolution that you're about to make says one truck.
Right. And I thought maybe it would be a great idea if we started all over again. Can we take this back to the, I'm only kidding, I have no questions.
Pull the slide down, I'll get the computer out.
I don't, where are they? Oh, right here. I don't know.
Right here. It's probably this one, right?
Yeah, this one at the top.
Go ahead. Do you want to make it? All right. So, if you're ready for a motion, I'd like to make a motion for a resolution marking and making an appropriation in the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the acquisition of a full-size Class A fire engine pumper apparatus and authorizing the assurance of a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the assurance thereof, issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, six-zero.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
I'm not going anywhere, I'm up again.
Thank you, anyway.
Thank you.
Good work, Bill.
This one won't be so painful, we promised.
It feels good now, though, right? You can feel the hug, you feel the support, right?
Board of Finance did good work on that as well, asked the right questions. The next item on the agenda, if I could, Mr. Chairman?
Special appropriation of thirteen hundred and nine dollars for SCBA.
Nope.
What?
Yeah, thirteen...
Yeah, that's it.
That's it. We'll clarify all that, but I just, again, the initiative that Mr. Ricks took here was outstanding. The savings to this town to buy this equipment, and we buy this equipment, as you know, it comes up in front of you every year. The savings, as documented in the paperwork, is two hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. That's not to say that that chunk of money isn't coming from taxpayers somewhere, it's coming from FEMA, I get it, this is our money, but it's not coming from the East Lime operating budget, and we're not going to go out and tack on more taxes to pay for these things locally, okay? This is an initiative that, again, hats off, this took a ton of work. And, on behalf of all the citizens, thank you very much for all that work. Outstanding, this is, this is what we like to see. So, Bill, go ahead and sell this.
All right. So, myself and another member of the firehouse, Brian Cleary, put together a FEMA grant. I did it last year, and then he assisted me with it this year again. We didn't get declined last year for it, they just ran out of money before they got to us. So, FEMA, for the Assistance to Firefighters grant, puts out three hundred and fourteen million dollars every year, and this year, we received a federal grant for all new SCBAs for the Flanders Fire Department. So, their share of that was a hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars, and we are responsible for the other nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-five, I believe it is, off the top of my head. The, we're only asking for thirteen, because the capital improvement plan had, I believe, around seven thousand to start purchasing the replacement of our SCBAs, so we're just looking for the difference to cover our nine thousand dollar share, and now that takes that line item out for the next couple of years, anyway.
This is a heavy line item that was going to be going out for the next five, six, seven years.
It would have been a total of two hundred and fifty...
Disappears.
Seven thousand dollars had we purchased them on our own.
Nice, yeah.
Can you get the other ninety-two hundred?
To the give-out fire trucks, by the way.
Sure, right.
It's a lot more rated than I can do.
Does anyone have any questions for Bill?
No. I'll move to appropriate and transfer thirteen hundred and nine dollars from account zero-one dash zero-one dash one-twenty dash three hundred dash five hundred contingency to account zero-one dash seventy dash seven twenty-four dash seven hundred dash four sixty-two, public service Flanders Fire Department equipment.
Public safety.
Public safety, thank you. In fiscal year two thousand sixteen seventeen, for the town's share of self-contained breathing apparatus gear for Flanders Fire Department. This request is consistent with the CIP.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I just want to say, between the fire department and the police department tonight, thank you guys for being sensitive to what we're trying to do here. It's been a really nice collaboration, I mean, we cannot do this without you guys, and it has the potential to be adversarial, and none of that happened tonight. We really appreciate your leadership in stepping up, and Mike Masick, same thing, so, good stuff.
Thank you guys for all the work you do and challenging us for getting there. Thank you.
I bet you weren't thinking that in the beginning, Bill.
All right, we'll move to our last item under new business. Approval of the audit firm for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Is that you, Anna?
Night, guys.
So, we did do an RFP for auditing services. We received two bids, one from our incumbent firm and another one from Bloom Shapiro, and we met with representative from both firms, and the committee, the committee consisted of Mr. Hahn, Ms. Bertie, Mark Nicholson, myself, and Maria Whalen. And after the committee met, it was thought that we wanted to keep our incumbent firm, and we were able to get the incumbent firm to come down to make the pricing more competitive for us. And actually, it's a lower pricing than we actually finished with for six-thirty sixteen.
Great. Yeah. Camille was on the committee, too, right?
Steve.
And Steve.
Good questions asked by all, kept them on their toes.
Great.
Yeah, and I think it worked well. I think we've done well with that firm, and they're going to be there as we, in all likelihood, over the course of this contract, we're going to have new software that we're going to try and bring onboard with the finance department and the Board of Ed. So, there was other stuff, we had analyzed the contracts, there was potentially work that would be outside of the scope of this, and I think with the current firm and this new bid, that we're going to protect ourselves from some potential extras to the contract, so I thought it went well, and thank Anna, who was there, Mark, Camille, and myself, and Maria from the Board of Ed.
Do you understand why the other guys were a quarter of the price for water and sewer? The ratio between the two just seems weird.
They couldn't explain that either. Bloom Shapiro, remember, we wondered why the water and sewer was so low, and that was all brought up.
And the town was so high. It just seems like this proportionality between the two, the scope is not seeing the same between both companies.
I don't think they did their homework, frankly, on that, seeing what we're paying now, and that only made, that complicated our decision, that had we gone with them, the town's costs would have been driven up and the water and sewer would have dramatic savings, and we didn't know how to justify that. So, yeah, very much complicated the discussion.
He didn't have a good answer.
Well, it seems weird that they came down to match the other guys, that's, kind of smells funny. But the ratio between the scope, right, because this kind of dictates what I thought the scope was. So, the incumbent thinks that the scope is about a third between the town and water and sewer, and the other guy thinks it's less than a tenth.
So, we don't have our policy yet to request quotes, right? Isn't that on, this is one of our old business?
Yeah, we do see that. I don't have it, I don't have it ready, but...
But you're working on it, so in other words, these bids were not specked out in accordance with our purchasing policy yet, because we're still working on that.
But I did send out a written RFP.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
We did send out a written RFP.
Yeah. Right.
We have a purchasing policy.
We do?
Well, we have a purchasing procedure. We get RFPs on things like this.
No, I know, but there's, I'm just asking how, I'm not, it's all good, we had written RFPs, I'm just asking, was it in accordance with our purchasing policy? I'm thinking not, because we're working on the policy, but I wanted to confirm that, am I right?
We have policies, we have a policy procedure that we follow, but we don't act, to your point, it's not committed to writing.
Okay, all right, but we're working on getting that.
And if it was in writing, it would have followed it. It would have been best practices.
Yeah.
Yes.
It was the scope of what really they're obligated to do under our charter and under an audit, so...
Okay, do we have action on that?
If someone would like to make a motion. Do we need to?
Someone should make a motion, and then I'll go right to the signing contract.
Okay.